All right, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We have quorum in the room. Welcome to our first Board of Health meeting for the new term. Call this meeting to an end. Members of public are advised that our meetings are webcast live by the City of Hamilton and temporarily archived on the city's website. Other individuals and the media may also be audibly or visually recording this meeting. As well, a reminder that all electronic devices are to be switched to a non-audible function during this meeting. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to today's agenda.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Moved by Denko, seconded by Marula. All in favor?
Carried.
Carried, very good, thank you. Are there any declarations of interest? None. A motion to approve the minutes of the September 17th meeting. That applies to only those that were there. So Counselor Pearson, Counselor Ferguson, all in favor? Carried. Communications, the child visual health vision screening protocol. A motion to receive on item 5-1. Moved by Farr, seconded by Nunn. All in favor? Carried, thank you. Consent items, the Food Advisory Committee minutes, May 9th, September 11th, and October 16th. Can I have a motion on those three minutes? Moved by Pearson, seconded by Ferguson. All in favor? Carried, thank you. Alcohol, drug, and gambling services and community mental health promotion program budget. Dr. Richardson is here to -- on the report, if you have any questions. So are there any questions? Did you want to do a preamble on that, Dr. Richardson? Not at all? Shaking your head violently, okay. The report's before you. Any questions or comments? Counselor Pearson.
Mayor, thank you. And I just -- because we're -- the recommendation isn't here, is that we approve the increase of .4 full-time for community health -- mental health promotion and .1 full-time. Wait a minute, is that a decrease for the alcoholics? So can staff just tell me then what happens in this, is going to the budget process? Ethan, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. No microphone?
Try this again. No, to answer your question, this doesn't go through the budget process beyond this. This budget is provided to us by the Lynn. This is actually the 2018-19 update -- updated budget. And in next month, you'll be seeing the 2019-2020 plan. And there's two different program areas here, and that's why you're seeing an FTE increase in one area and a decrease in the other.
I appreciate the clarification. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So a motion by yourself, seconded by Counselor Clerk. All in favor? Carried, thank you. Delegations, Halima Al-Hatimi is here, respecting a FemCare Community Health Initiative. Please welcome. Come on down to the podium at the front there. We'll have your microphone on.
I didn't realize I was the first one to speak today, so, all right. Hi, everybody. My name is Halima Al-Hatimi, and I'm the founder and president of FemCare Community Health Initiative. I'd like to thank you all for being here today, Mayor Eisenberger, the honorable members of council, and our esteemed guests. So I'm here to talk to you about the issue of poverty, homelessness, and menstrual hygiene management. Now, before I get into talking about all the facts and statistics about this issue, I'd like to share my personal story with you. I was 11 years old when I got my first period. I recall my father shaming and humiliating me in front of the entire family. He was very abusive, and so some of the things that -- one of the things he used to do to punish me was to withhold the funds that I needed to purchase menstrual products. And so oftentimes, I had to resort to very unhealthy and unsafe practices in order to maintain cleanliness during that time. So sometimes I'd have to ask my friends to give me money and -- or to lend me products, which I almost always overused. Or I would have to panhandle on the streets in order to afford these products, because they weren't being provided in the schools that I attended, in the food banks, or in community organizations. Fast forward to when I was about 15 years old, my father abducted me and my mother to Kenya. I was stuck in Kenya and Uganda for a period of seven months. During that time, I was almost married off as a child bride to a 33-year-old man. I lived with my maternal grandmother in extreme poverty, and I recall during that time as well that me, my mother, and my aunts would have to use cotton pads or regs in order to collect our menstrual blood, because we weren't able to afford products. These products were only -- were only a luxury that could be afforded by women in the middle and upper classes. I managed to discreetly collaborate with the Canadian government to organize my escape back to Canada. When I got here, I lived with a legal guardian who also subjected me to very severe abuse. So at 17 years old, I had to move out of her home and live on my own. I was an Ontario Works recipient at the time, and I remember not having enough money to make ends meet, because they weren't giving enough. And so for one week every month, I had to choose between purchasing menstrual products or eating. And so I often had to eat less one week of every month so that I could afford those products. Fast forward to when I was 22 years old, I experienced homelessness, and I was couch-surfing at my friend's home for about eight to nine months. During that time, I remember menstrual hygiene management being one of the most difficult issues that I had to contend with as a homeless woman. Now, at 25 years old, I was working as a long-term care nurse, and I was also doing my undergraduate degree at Ryerson University in health administration. Now, one day, one fateful day, when I was supposed to be working on my assignment, I was instead procrastinating on Facebook, when I came across an article that was talking about period poverty. And that article was an eye-opener for me, because it was then that I realized that all the experiences that I had were actually not unique to me. Inadequate menstrual hygiene management impacts women all over the world, and not just in third-world countries like I experienced in Kenya, but right here in Canada and here in our home in Hamilton, Ontario. It's estimated that, on average, a woman will use about 11,000 sanitary products in her lifetime, which can amount to nearly $6,000. And here in Hamilton, 54% of Ontario Works recipients are either women or women-headed households. So you can imagine that this cost can be a significant barrier to accessing menstrual hygiene management. So what are some of the consequences of inadequate menstrual hygiene management? So infectious disease, incarceration and recidivism, school absenteeism, particularly amongst young girls, and an inability to obtain employment and maintain it. So in 2016, New York City made history when it became the first municipality in the United States to fund menstrual products for homeless women, girls, and trans persons who menstruate. They actually found that by installing pad and tampon dispensers in schools, that school absenteeism went down amongst young girls. And in Toronto this year, Mayor John Tory announced that May 28th, 2018, would be the inaugural menstrual hygiene day in Toronto. And Counselor Wong Tam, on June 25th, 2018, tabled a motion before council in Toronto to convince council to fund products for menstrual products for homeless and precariously low-income women, girls, and trans persons. And so my recommendation today to -- that I'm -- well, I have two recommendations that I'm presenting to council in order to address the issue here in our city. The first one is multiphasic, so it would be -- it would include conducting a feasibility assessment to see if it is possible to fund -- for the city to take the responsibility of funding menstrual products for this population. And the second phase would be a consultation process, which you would enlist organ -- community nonprofit and corporate partners to help with the implementation of the program. And then the last part would be the implementation, so it would include developing a rigorous application process to ensure that the funds get to the right organizations and the people who need it most. This is a photo of me with some of the Board of -- members of the Board of Directors at Willow's Place, and here's a picture of one of the homeless women that they serve signing the petition that I presented to council today to fund menstrual products for this population. The second recommendation would be for council to officially reckon or declare May 28th, 2018, as the inaugural menstrual hygiene day in Hamilton. Implementing an awareness day is a relatively low-cost way of generating citywide discourse and educating the public on the complexities of menstrual hygiene management, and just how fundamentally important this issue is in the lives of women, girls, and trans persons who menstruate, not just here in Hamilton, but all over the world. And that marks the end of my presentation. Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you very much, Halima, for your presentation, and congratulations on your success. You know, it's quite a journey you've been on, and certainly you seem like you're well on your way of setting your own pace and your own agenda, and making a presentation here, I think, has been very helpful for all of us to help understand the issues that come around through feminine hygiene and the challenges that it presents. So we have a number of questions, so it'll go away. Four in total right now. First one is Counselor Sam Marula.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and welcome today. The presentation was very thorough, and I really appreciate what I'm hearing. And I'm wondering through you, Mr. Mayor, is that I can't believe that we haven't, as a city or as a province or as a country, actually put a program together to address this issue. And I'm wondering if we are perhaps doing it informally that we're not aware of, or whether or not it's -- can you just elaborate on that, I guess? I'm just shocked that we're not doing it presently.
Yeah, no, that's a very good question. So informally, a lot is happening, but it's usually community members that are coming together. Just we're depending on the altruism of our community right now. FemCare is one of the organizations that's been helping here in Hamilton, so we run drives on a quarterly basis. We're actually hosting one on December 15th. So we've been getting donations from local businesses as well as larger corporate sponsors, and we've been getting it from the community as well. But I'm sure you can imagine that this is not necessarily a sustainable solution. It doesn't get to all the women who need it, and they just -- they don't -- they also don't get enough. Some women use about one to two packs a week. I mean, I'm sorry, well, during their menstrual cycle, one to two packs a month. And we're just not able to give them that much supply, unfortunately.
And I'm also wondering through you, Mr. Mayor, through Ontario Works or ODSP, there must be a program incorporated with them, special income accordingly, or they -- so you're telling me that if you go to your worker at Ontario Works or ODSP, they wouldn't provide you with necessary funding?
Currently, there's nothing designated for menstrual products. No, it's usually -- they give you some funds for toiletries and groceries, but there's -- special income is usually for people who have, like, dietary restrictions. Usually, they don't -- they don't have anything set aside specifically for menstrual products, and they don't give additional money for menstrual products either.
So through you to staff, can anyone elaborate on what they might believe does exist, if anything, and how we can bridge what we presently do versus what's being recommended here today?
So we're back there, have a poll, Johnson?
Well, through the mayor, much of it is a philanthropic outlet. So shelters, this is a huge issue within shelters. It is an issue that we're aware of through Ontario Works, but as the speaker has indicated, there isn't a specific program. You can't sign up for these benefits as an additional benefit on top of your basic needs allowance under Ontario Works. So I know shelters and food banks certainly do put in these requests, and then working with organizations like FemCare, there's an awful lot of focus being put on it. Years ago, when I used to work in this sector, we worked very closely with the United Church Women to fund this type of a program. But no, there isn't a systemic program where people can come and apply for this and work in schools I'm less familiar with. But I would say it is as the speaker's presented. It's on the goodness of communities to come forward and run these programs, and it is not a universal program by any stretch.
Mr. Mayor, I find that astounding, at the same age. At the appropriate time, if someone doesn't have a motion, I'd like to bring forward a motion to support what's before us and to have staff report back on the feasibility, cost, and so on. I think it's -- I'm beside myself, actually. I'm shocked that we don't have a more systemic approach to dealing with this, and I appreciate your time, and I very appreciate your presentation. Thank you.
I will come back to you on that. Next speaker is Counselor Wilson.
Thank you so much for being here. I appreciate your journey. I appreciate your insights and your character for speaking to such an important issue. I am delighted, in a way, but it's a slightly muted delight, of the trajectory upon which we're speaking about the issue of menstruation, the importance of eliminating all stigma that women, over centuries, have had to bear on this issue. As a mother of three children, and two of them are girls, it is a constant battle to underscore to them and with them that it is natural, it is normal, and in fact, it's a source of power. We are part of the moon and the tides and the sun. In middle school, in our -- my school, it was known that it was never public, but if you got your period, you had to go to the office, where there was a very lovely secretary who would covertly pass you a brown big envelope in which you were allocated one pad. There's many girls still today who are not -- they don't -- they're not told about menstruation. They have to hide it, and the numbers of young girls who -- and young women who can't afford it is significant. I am still dismayed at the number of ads that are out there that try and make menstruation discreet, almost like a microchip that you can hide it in your purse without anyone knowing that you're actually menstruating. I find that those ads frustrating, and that's why I do question some days the trajectory of our progress on this issue. So thank you so much for bringing it to our attention. Thank you so much for advancing the facts that to menstruate is a costly endeavor. But it is as normal and essential. It is what we do as females. And buying products to address that is not a luxury, just like toilet paper and soap. And I'm very pleased with my counselor colleague who would like to bring a motion. I have one worded, and I'd like to read it out at the appropriate time.
Okay, I'll come back to you. So we're at questions at this point, so questions for Habu, Halima, sorry, would be appropriate, but I'll come back to you for motion. So it sounds like Counselor Marula's prepared to defer to your motion, which is great. Counselor Nunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Halima, for your presentation and delegation today. I also want to take a moment to say thank you for sharing your personal story. It is so critical that it is part of the public narrative as you advance this as a universal human rights issue, a health issue, a community-building issue, and one that reinforces the supports that are needed for women and trans-identified folks to fulfill their full contribution to our society here in Hamilton. There's no questions that I have of you. I just want to say thank you so much for your leadership in the community, for bringing this to the Board of Health, and I look forward to supporting systemic solutions that you've recommended. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Counselor Whitehead?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too have a daughter and can certainly appreciate, as a father, the challenges dealing with those issues. It's funny, Counselor Marula, myself, Counselor Collins, and others couldn't believe that we didn't have a robust level of service to offset these issues and needs, and rightfully so Counselor Marula's questions, because it was -- we just took it for granted that that was already happening and was available. So I commend you to not only raise the education, understanding, but to have that dialogue. So a couple of things. One question is, you may or may not be able to answer this, but when I look at the basic income or the social service program, and we know how they allocate those dollars, is a male get the exact same amount as a female? Is this additional costing built into that income? I don't know if we can answer that.
From what I'm aware, there's no -- they don't take a gender-based lens to the way they distribute resources, so I don't want to say no, but I highly doubt it. And when I was an OW recipient, and I was an OW recipient for a while, I don't ever recall any sort of gender-based perspective on the way they distributed the resources, so.
So I want to go beyond just the needs in our local community, but on a macro policy to ensure that we -- it's pretty clear, I don't think we have to have much discussion, that there's probably additional costs that women take on that men don't, that's just basic hygiene. And so the issue for me, then, is whether or not we should be contemplating legislative regulatory changes or lobby with the province of Ontario to ensure that those adjustments are reflected in the basic income contribution. So we'll flush that out offline, but I just want to put that on the radar. So I think that now I'm looking at it from just not just the local scene, but I'm looking at a macro gender lens approach to this issue, because, like I said, for us guys, we just took for granted we were providing it, and you've opened our eyes and created that discussion. The other thing is, I also want to make sure that we're targeting the people that need this level of service, and because I, you know, I don't want to be in a situation now that we're providing the hygiene products for people that can literally afford it, and there's only a limited capacity of financing. So when we talk about machines, I want to make sure that the people that are accessing it with dignity, because that's the other issue. I don't want to lose sight of the dignity piece, empowerment. But I want to make sure that we are targeting the people indeed that don't have the financial means, and we're targeting that resource directly to them. So it wasn't clear on how we do that in the schools.
So I think probably the best way to do that is during the consultation phase, to actually enlist partners that work closely with this population. Willow's Place, where are they? They're right over there. They actually came to support the presentation today. Thank you. So they're one of the organizations that work very closely with homeless women or people who identify as women. So I think that that would probably be the first step, is enlisting schools, community organizations like mission services, so that you can ensure that these funds are getting to the right people in a dignified fashion, because they work closely with this population, and they'll be able to answer those kinds of questions.
Appreciate that. So that would be my only caveat, is that I want to do it.
Understand.
But understanding we got limited resources, I want to make sure that the people that need it are getting it, but they're also getting it in a very dignified way, because we want to maintain that empowerment, that opportunity for people to feel good about themselves. I mean, a long time, I've never been a big supporter of food banks. It's not because there's not a need for them. I just thought it was an indignant way of dealing with people, and it has to be a better, more profound, dignified way to address those issues without people waiting in food lines and those kinds of things. And, you know, I'm proud of the fact we have a community kitchen on the mountain, is a model I want to see emulated across. It's more about empowerment, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. No further speakers. So Halima, thank you very much for your presentation. I'll take a motion to receive the presentation. Moved by Counselor Whitehead, seconded by Counselor Nunn. All in favor? Carried, thank you so very much. Counselor Wilson, you indicated you had a motion. If you would ask a request on your microphone, and I'll turn you on. There we go.
For your consideration, that staff be directed to review with the city manager and report back on the cost and implementation of providing shelters, drop-in centers, respite centers, and other working -- and others working with homeless, street-involved, and low-income girls and trans individuals to free menstrual hygiene products. That staff be directed to engage with the Hamilton Wentworth District School Board and the Hamilton Wentworth Catholic District School Board for the purpose of discussing the possibility of having those entities making menstrual hygiene products available in area middle and secondary schools. And the other, considering making May 28th, 2019 menstrual hygiene day. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's a bitful. So part of that actually will end up going to clerks, and I think proclamations we haven't done as a rule, as a council, but it's certainly something we can consider. So the motion's before you, it was seconded by Counselor Nunn. Okay. Speaking to the motion, Counselor Whitehead.
We should have, and I think what was on the presentation was very comprehensive. It's not just about the feasibility, it's about consultation. And I don't, unless I missed it, I didn't see consultation built into the -- into that motion. So I'm wondering, we're looking at a report that comes back in regards to not just being able to deliver the cost, but I'd like to have -- ensure that we have appropriate consultation so we implement these programs in a robust, dignified way. So if we can throw -- if we can make that friendly amendment, is that we incorporate consultation into this, into the next report.
Right. And I did hear consultation with school boards. Did you want to kind of read it off again in terms of the consultation you were?
I don't know if I missed it or not. That's it.
I think the intent was to consult with the area, the Catholic Board and the public Board, to begin some dialogue on how they might support both a dignified and accessible means to these necessary products. I'm not sure if you wanted to extend the consultation beyond that, I'm sorry.
That's fine. I was just going off the sheet that was handed to us, and I thought this was really well thought out and how they presented it in regards to what they're asking of us, and so I just want to make sure we don't lose sight of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the second part of the motion, we could include stakeholders and community agencies, and I think that would capture the additional consultation that's required. I'm just thinking Willow Place and organizations like that, they should be party to it, so just a friendly amendment so that we capture those, and I'll support the motion. Thank you, sir.
Sounds good, okay. That was a friendly amendment. So on the motion, then, no other speakers. All in favor? Carried, and the opposed? Unanimous, thank you. Thank you, and we'll be reporting back, and we'll certainly be letting you know when it's coming back to council. Thanks a lot. Okay, item 9-1, Clean Air Hamilton 2017 Progress Report. The new chair is here, Bruce Dubold.
Mr. Mayor.
Where's yours? Thank you.
Counselors, city staff, all else in attendance. My name's Bruce Dubold. I'm a professor in School of Geography at McMaster University, and it's my pleasure to update you with the 2017 air quality progress report from Clean Air Hamilton. I realize the irony that with just three weeks away before 2019, that we're still talking about 2017, but give you a sense of what we've been doing. Clean Air Hamilton's primary objective is to improve air quality for all of the citizens of Hamilton, and we work with a diverse set of stakeholders around the table. And you can see a list of some And you can see a list of some of those individuals or organizations, but we include industry, non-government organizations, academics, as well of course, local government, MECP and Environment Canada, for example. Before I go too much further, I think it's, would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the tremendous work that Dennis Core has done with Clean Air Hamilton. Dennis was the former Chair of Clean Air Hamilton, I took over from him just over a year ago, so thank you, Dennis. And also the support of city staff members, Trevor Imhoff and Shelley Rogers. They are the ones that are making me look good, hopefully anyways, this afternoon and have really assisted me in the transition in terms of the Chair. So we're providing sound science and policy directives in terms of improving air quality within the city of Hamilton. And the overall message is a really good message in that we've seen tremendous reductions in, you know, air pollutants and/or improvement in air quality across the city over the past 20 years. And you can get sort of a sense of where we've seen some of those improvements in criteria, air pollutants within the city over this time period, over that approximately 20-year time period. So for example, total suspended particulates or TSP, 57% reduction, and I'm not going to read through each of these, they're all there for us to see. But, you know, reductions in particulate matter, nitrous oxide, sulfur dioxides, and so on. We met our Canadian Ambient Air Quality Standards, or CAECs, in 2016, and we continue to see improvements in a number of areas. And I'll take some of these pollutants apart, one by one, and you can sort of get a sense of what's been happening with them, you know, that closer look in terms of some of the reductions. So here's particulate matter, or PM 2.5. And PM 2.5 is a respirable particle, meaning that it can be inhaled deeply into the lungs, and we know, we have the science to show that it's associated with cardiovascular disease, increased respiratory risk and problems, as well as other concerns, including cognitive behavior, as well as reproductive health concerns. So you can, this is comparing Hamilton with other southern Ontario cities. You can see where Hamilton, that's sort of the light blue bar there, for example, we do see that increase in 2013, and that was as we shifted some of the air quality monitors, that PM monitors, to ones that were more efficient. But then, you know, we remain below that CAECs threshold of 10 micrograms per cubic meter. The standards will be increasing or becoming more stringent in the near future, so we need continued diligence in terms of dealing with PM 2.5, as well as other pollutants. Other graphs here, looking at total reduced sulfur trend, at the top right-hand corner, total reduced sulfur, that's what you smell essentially, okay? And we see that those reductions, we have inhalable particulate, so another type of particulate matter, it's, you know, we recognize that there's total suspended particulates, PM 10, PM 2.5, and that's just the size really, the particle. Inhalable, that PM 10, that gets into the respiratory tract and it's associated with discomfort or irritation, and then, as I mentioned, that PM 2.5 getting deeper into the respiratory system. The bottom right-hand corner, we're taking a look at PM 2.5 across 10 other Canadian cities. Hamilton there, maybe not doing quite as well as some of the other cities, so again, room for improvement there, but that probably also reflects some of the transportation, as well as industry that we see here within the city. Nitrogen oxides, nitrogen dioxide trends, ozone, again, reductions, at least on the nitrogen oxides and the nitrogen dioxides, both of those coming from combustion, whether industry or transportation, for example. Again, reductions in those overall trends. The ground-level summer ozone trend, you'll see that that's pretty sort of up and down, we don't really see that trend in terms of declining ozone over a period of time. And that reflects that large part of that ozone is coming in from outside of Hamilton, so a trans-border type of movement of that pollution. But we'd also see, tend to see it peak in summer months, so it's associated with heat, associated with sunshine, sunshine where we see that increase in terms of ozone within the city. Sulfur dioxide trends, again, on the downward trend, and then benzoyl pyrene and benzene, both of those latter too, that benzoyl pyrene and benzene, again, you know, overall declining trends, we see some variation across the years associated with that. Both of those are typically associated with industrial pollution, particularly the steel industry and the coke ovens within the city, but overall, you know, that good sort of news in terms of the downward trends associated with both of those. Just in terms of the sulfur dioxide, again, you know, we see that reduction, but, you know, again, we have to sort of keep our eye on that and of course, the other pollutants here, sulfur dioxide, for example, in the atmosphere, it turns to sulfuric acid, and then ultimately into sulfates, which become a respirable particle. So going back to that particulate matter that I talked about a moment ago. I should note too, that in each of these slides or in each of these graphs, we're seeing comparisons between the industrial sites, as well as in the downtown parts of the city. So you start to get a sense of some of the variation across space in terms of these pollutants, that we recognize that while these are overall downward trends, for the most part, that there are significant variations across space within the city in terms of these pollutants. One of the things that's particularly exciting about what Clean Air Hamilton does is their engagement with local stakeholders within the community in ways of trying to get the message out about the importance of air quality within the city. So from 2017, some of the projects that we supported and partnered with, for example, the Enhanced Fresh Air for Kids with Anti-IDling, this was Green Venture and Core Research, but going into the schools, working with children and students in those schools, giving them, you know, or educating them around concerns associated with air quality, doing some real-time monitoring, taking a look at the routes that they get to school, and really sort of educating them in terms of the concerns around air quality. Second, building community awareness and action regarding respirable air particulate pollution in Hamilton. So here, working with Environment Hamilton, where individuals within the community, and again, some students, built small portable particulate matter sensors so that they could wander through the city, walk through the city, and get a real-time sense of what that particulate matter looked like in their neighborhood. So real, sort of real-time monitoring and tracking, and again, it brings that awareness of pollution within the city to, you know, a very sort of neighborhood or local level within the city. Looking ahead, again, a number of projects that we're excited to be partnering with, so continuing that Enhanced Fresh Air for Kids with Anti-IDling, and again, Green Venture and Core Research. So anti-IDling engagement campaigns, again, going into the schools, working with the students there, teaching them about anti-IDling or that we should not be idling, and it's seen some real success in terms of some of those schools. If I remember correctly, at Cathy Weaver, there's a 54% in terms of reduction, in terms of idling at Cathy Weaver after the education program had been in place. Second, working with Cycle Hamilton, Environment Hamilton on friendly streets, so street-level audits, in this case around the General Hospital, in terms of, again, education around air pollution, safe travel, and then also, you know, talking about the challenges of air pollution monitoring and particulate matter measuring PM 2.5 in those areas. And then Bus for Brains, again, a coordinated piece with Green Venture and Dr. Matt Adams, who's at the University of Toronto, Mississauga. And this is air monitoring completed by students while traveling to school by bus. And Dr. Adams will be taking a look at that data. And for those of you that have ever been on a school bus on a hot summer day on the highway, when the windows are down on that bus, guess where the window level is? It's right next to the exhaust of the diesel trucks on the highway, pretty much. So some really interesting information, again, that's going to come out of that work. In terms of future actions, that will continue to support and undertake the recommendations of the Air Quality Task Force, including activities related to air monitoring and green infrastructure within the city. We're going to continue to support initiatives aimed at reducing transportation-related pollution and greenhouse gases around projects such as the LRT, the expansion of the HSR services, and expansion of bike lanes across the city. We want to support initiatives aimed at greater connectivity of active transportation, such as the Downtown Active Superhighway or DASH, and the Mountain Active Superhighway or MASH, support the expansion of electric vehicle charging within the city, and continue to support groups that will aim to improve air quality across the city, and then ultimately public health within the city. Why, and it goes back to my initial statement, that we want to improve the air quality for all of the citizens within Hamilton. And I'll thank you for your attention.
Always a crisp and clean presentation, thank you very much. And Dennis Core is always here to make sure you're presenting and keeping an eye on you, apparently.
That's right.
Yes, right. But he'll never lose his passion for clean air in Hamilton, and we appreciate that very much, and you have the same passion as well, as does the whole organization. So some questions. Maria Pearson, Counselor Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and certainly, thank you, Bruce, for the presentation and the update. So a couple of things. First off, I just want to ask on the first chart, and that's when I push the button to be, to ask a question, the air quality, the 14-year trends for PM 2.5. For some reason, I just want to ask why, from 2013 to now, there's nothing showing for London. Is that because of the measurement changes, or like, why did they just file off the table?
Yeah, I'm going to refer that to Trevor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Depending on the certain types of concentrations, the Ministry of the Environment would make decisions which pollutants to monitor, so I can only assume, because I don't know for sure, that based on the previous readings from the London's Ministry of the Environment's Air Quality Station, that they decided to stop monitoring PM 2.5.
That could be good or bad for London. We won't worry about that, but for London, it could be good or bad. But thank you for that information, because I just thought it was rather strange that they were suddenly gone. With regards to, and I appreciate the comments you made with regards to the schools, and certainly with the new schools that are being built, the broader area that students are being required to walk now, I know in my area, I'm not going to speak for everyone else in the wards, but I know in my area, we get more and more parents feeling that they have ownership to drive the student's school and to pick them up. And I'm hoping whatever can be done, I know our school Transportation Liaison Committee, they work very hard in going out and encouraging parents not to drive and giving safe walking routes, et cetera. So I'm pleased of what also is being done from this end and from your organization as to encouraging parents, please do not drive your children's school, there is not the need to do that. Let them grow up and let them be safe on the streets, and certainly don't add to the pollution issues. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Murilla.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and many thanks for your presentation. One thing that I do need to emphasize, page 13 out of 20, where it really focuses in on the ambient air quality trends and comparisons, the amount of progress we've made is truly remarkable and something that I think can't be understated. And having said that, I think we also need to look at how much more we need to do. And through you, Mr. Mayor, the airshed itself in Hamilton, as we know, has been deemed and recognized as challenged, and I believe the other airshed is in Sudbury, if I'm not mistaken. So the two have been identified by the province, yet they still have not changed or amended legislation to make it, to assist areas such as Hamilton or Sudbury, particularly surrounding the fact that it's more voluntary than mandatory, that the Ministry of Environment act more like business consultants than they do enforcement branches. And I'm just wondering through you, Mr. Mayor, on that front, I'm very concerned with the change of government. We had an issue with the previous government regarding, I guess, having the Ministry of Environment truly be an enforcement branch, and I only think that's going to get worse rather than better. So although we've made significant strides and things have improved, I'm not optimistic about the enforcement aspect. So through you, Mr. Mayor, could you elaborate on some of those challenges and what we can do as a municipality to combat what I believe is inevitable, and the fact that we're going to get less enforcement rather than more?
Thank you, Counselor Murilla. I'm going to start to answer your question with a short story, and I'll keep it brief. About three weeks ago, I had the pleasure of being in Edmonton, and they had their Alberta Capital Airshed Conference Workshop Day. And I was there in large part to talk about what we've been doing within the city of Hamilton and Clean Air Hamilton in particular, and a lot of the success that we've had here. At the end of the day, at the end of my presentation, I was asked, why in Hamilton are you worried about air quality? And for a moment, it sort of, I had to sit there and think for a moment why I was being asked that question. And the importance is the context of the question, because a lot of the discussion that day had been about air quality associated with the forest fires that Alberta and British Columbia experienced this past summer. So for Edmonton, it was particulate matter and the importance there. Where does that fit in with Hamilton? Because I comment, it's the industry within the city and the importance of industry within the city. So getting to the enforcement piece, there are several different pieces. So I mentioned that the CAECs criteria around PM 2.5, for example, is becoming tighter in the near future. There's also new legislation coming forward in the very near future, with some of it actually set to start as of January 1, 2019, around sulfur dioxide, benzoyl pyrene and benzene. Some of that relates to cumulative exposure, so how much, as well as that, you know, it's sort of the acute type of exposures. So there are new legislative pieces within the province that the province has brought forward that will continue to tighten the air quality standards. From an enforcement perspective, you know, the pure enforcement, it's my understanding that, you know, that the enforcement continues to be as tight or as rigorous as it has been in the past. And we also have groups like Environment Hamilton, for example, that really sort of help to keep our feet to the fire in terms of watching what's happening within the city. So, you know, if there is an event or a concern, that they're bringing that forward to us, to Clean Air Hamilton, for example, to MECP as well.
And I wish I was as optimistic as you. Having said that, I think the other component that I'd like to emphasize is that there was some data years ago related to the fact that over 2,000 people a year die in Ontario as a result of poor air quality. And I believe the number locally was in at around 200. Through you, Mr. Chairman, does that still, is that still accurate today?
I couldn't give you the exact numbers in terms of attributable deaths associated with air pollution, but yes, it remains a problem and we continue to see that. You know, our hope is that with improvements and continued improvements, that there will be, you know, improved or benefits to health and reduce mortality associated with that air quality. That doesn't mean, you know, I'm not here saying that those concerns or those risks are gone or completely mitigated by any means. You know, we have to continue to keep an eye on it. And I guess, sorry, just to add, just, you know, as the science continues to evolve, we see more and more health concerns associated with exposure to pollution, both short and long-term. So it, you know, again, it's the motivation to continue to work at reducing these pollutants within the city.
And to put that in perspective, Mr. Mayor, imagine if we had 200 murders a year locally or any other aspect that would contribute to 200 deaths per year, the outcry that would exist within our community, fear, anger, what have you. I think that the lack of comprehension surrounding the severity of this continues to be problematic and one that we need to continually emphasize and stress accordingly. I appreciate your time.
Great, thank you. Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions, if I may. So the chart that's up there right now, the red line at the, I think that's 10 parts per million, is that a goal from the ministry, from the feds? per million, is that a goal from the ministry, from the feds?
That's federal, if I'm correct.
Federal. And so if I'm understanding the graph correctly, after 2013, our numbers went up, but buried in the report was a comment about machines that are more sensitive, I guess, I'm paraphrasing?
Correct.
So in the report, it talks about a 26% total reduction over 18 years. If we've now, if we're now using air monitors that are more sensitive, then in reality, that number would have been even higher?
Had we been use, sorry, had we been using--
We've been using them all along, and they were much more sensitive.
That's probably a correct assessment.
An extrapolation anyways, okay. And the last question, if I may, Mr. Mayor, on the page 13 of 20, it talks about benzene and PAH, partly encyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, and not available from Station 29,000 for 2017. Why is that?
That was our downtown station, sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, that was our downtown station, and it just wasn't, or as far as I'm aware, it was not monitoring at that point for those particular contaminants. The information was not available.
We have no information because it just simply didn't work?
Or wasn't being collected.
I'll take it offline. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Whitehead.
Thank you. I noticed Hamilton, Toronto, Kitchener, London, you don't have Sarnia there. But Sarnia is an interesting benchmark for a number of reasons. We talk about airshed, and we talk about the impacts of what's happening in the South and the standards creating in the South. I mean, I think Trump has gone and pushed coal, more coal-generating power, and lowered the regulatory issues around coal. Hamilton is very close to the border. We, London and Kitchener may not have the same air quality impacts in their community than Hamilton, so it's not necessarily an apple-to-apple comparison when I'm looking at charts, because there's the controllables and there's the things we can't control. And I don't know how we distinguish what that level is.
So that's a really good question. Over this past year, we've done, there, an airshed model has been released, and that gives, has given us a sense of where our pollution is coming from, what's being generated within the city, and what's coming in from transborder, so outside of the city. And we know a huge proportion of that air pollution is coming, you know, downwind through, you know, the Ohio and Mississippi River Valleys and into southern Ontario. So a large part of our pollution is coming in from the U.S. or from elsewhere in the province. So it's not just our problem. We can work to fix what's here, and then we can lobby to continue to fix what's outside, to address those pollution pieces outside of the city. And that's one of the things that we do as Clean Air Hamilton. But it does make, it can make the comparisons difficult, but we, it's also vital that we do that so we know, you know, where we are. And Sarnia, you know, Lampton is an important area for taking a look at, for sure.
I appreciate it. Again, I just want to make sure we know what we can control in regards to our responsibility, but not be discouraged that when the graphs may show that we're, you know, we're making headway, but it's very minute based on these other variables that we have no control over. And then when we're trying to look at how we're compared to other communities, it looks like we're not performing. And I want to make sure that we can quantify, we are in fact in performing, and we're doing equal or better than some of these comparators, but we have variables that need to be understood. The other issue, of course, and again, I'm trying to understand how that impacts these kinds of charts, is climate change and inversions and so forth in regards to weather conditions. And we've got micro and macro climates. So the question is, when we're looking at these graphs, and do we overlay the weather and the inversions and those kinds of things over a period of time to, again, better understand whether it's not a performance issue in the context of what's happening in Hamilton, but there are yet another variable that is impacting those numbers?
Correct. You know, what you're seeing here in terms of the graphs, these are the averages, you know, taken. So it's rolling up those, you know, the short term, you know, the monitoring in days, weeks, months, and so on. So we're getting that yearly average is what you see here. That average, then, is going to be figuring in any of those climatic type of events, the inversions that you spoke of, you know, increasing summer temperatures and so on. Those all get wrapped up in there. So you're just seeing, you know, the overall effect or decline in terms of air pollutants.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Pauls.
The community project supported, and I just want to clear, it says that you do programs for kids with new anti-idling. What age group is that? Do they drive?
No, these would be elementary, school-aged children.
Okay. So what are we sending the message, example of us, I go to a drive-through, and there's 20, 30 cars lined up to get a coffee, or what kind of messaging are we sending? What example are we doing with the drive-throughs then, anti-idling? Like, why are you teaching the kids while we can't even do it?
Good point. But, you know, our hope is that they're going home and then talking to their parents about, you know, not idle. But that very point about idling and drive-throughs has been brought up in some of the Clean Air Hamilton meetings, and are there ways that we can start to address that and continue to educate, you know, the broader public? I go out and I run in the morning, and it's amazing the number of cars that I pass that are sitting in the driveways that are idling and warming up on a day like this morning, for example. It tells us that there's still a tremendous amount of work that we need to do to get that message out there, that idling doesn't work. You know, yes, it's nice to get into a warm car, but--
But it's not as much, honestly, I want, I couldn't believe, I went through a drive-through, I couldn't believe the weight, and I thought, look at all of us, what we're doing. But if you were teaching the elementary, we should be teaching the high schools, because they're driving, not the elementary who has no, really, I just don't see it. I think it should be more high school, because they drive as well, and they go to get a coffee, or they're going to get a McDonald's. I'm not cutting any, like, I'm not saying, you know, we've got to shut them all down. I'm just saying, there's a mixed message right there, anti-idling, and we're doing it, so.
So maybe, you know, that's a future task for Dennis and the group to reach out to some of the high school students and work with them as they continue to do the Fresh Air for Kids program. Certainly an opportunity. You know, the only other piece that I'd say there, you have to take a careful look at, or, you know, look in terms of where these fit into the curriculum, that we can't just walk into a school and just say, here we are, we're going to do this. It does have to fit into the school curriculum.
But I just find public school, like grade school, they're not going to be driving from five to 10 years down the road, and it's a, I just find it kind of humorous.
Point taken.
I think theoretically, the teaching those kids, they lean on their parents to do the right thing. It's the same approach we took with recycling. We actually got to the younger kids, and they actually taught their parents how to recycle. So it becomes kind of a family affair, and I think that's the theory behind why they're getting the kids younger rather than older, because when they're older, they've already made some conclusions about what they want to do. When you get them younger, they're impressionable, and you can actually change behavior.
I agree, I agree with you.
I think that's the theory, yeah.
Exactly.
Councilor Wilson.
Thank you very much. That was very informative. I'm new to this, so I just have some questions on how you do what you do. The downtown sites, when you're measuring the air quality, do you measure it anywhere else other than downtown versus industry, other parts of the city?
So the data that you're seeing here, those come from three different sites. There's also the Hamilton Air Monitoring Network, and they have a variety of different sites across the city. Many of those in the industrial core for looking at air quality there, and a number of air pointers as well, all gathering information. The data that you see here today and in the report are based upon three stations.
The reason for my question is the environmental justice component around how we build our cities and how some of our older neighborhoods and sometimes some of our poorer neighborhoods suffer the legacy of an overbuilt, car-centric community. That may be some of our newer parts of the city don't have five lanes of highway running through their neighborhood. So I was interested in the deviation of the new, of that, those neighborhoods.
In terms, sorry, in terms of the new neighborhoods?
Those, yeah.
Yeah. So we can't, it's hard for us to drill down to sort of a specific street or roadway, for example. With the airshed study that I mentioned a few minutes ago, the next step, because that took a look at Hamilton as a whole, the next step in that study is to start to drill down at least into smaller parts of the city, sort of a, you know, industrial area, mountain east and west, older city of Hamilton east and west, for example. It allows us to start to look at some of those areas where we see or have greater air quality concerns, and then think further about, okay, well, how can we start to mitigate, you know, or minimize those air quality pieces? You know, I think your question around the built environment is an important one and a valid one, and it is something that we need to take a look at. So the LRT, for example, is a significant piece in that in terms of not just being forward-thinking around population increase, but removing cars from the roadway for greenhouse gas. Is it citywide? No, but it's the beginning of a process that will help to remove cars from the roadway, and the same with, you know, enhancing HSR service, for example. So we do have to be aware of those places or pieces like that.
Yes and no, I agree, and I trust that will inform council's spending and planning priorities when we think about the kind of investments that we need to make. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilor Duff. Rinder?
Sorry.
Yep.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your presentation. Similar to Councilor Wilson's point, I did notice in the summary of the report that some areas of the city are impacted more than others or could be, so I'm looking forward to seeing some of that drill-down information that you're saying is coming next, precisely to help inform some of our local planning choices. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Whitehead, second time.
Thank you. Well, there was an addition there, and I need to clarify that with one exception, there isn't a study anywhere that indicates that putting in a transit system lowers the amount of cars that are continued, being utilized in those corridors. So I want to make sure that, it's a nice dream, but in reality, it hasn't been demonstrated in many studies. But congestion has, and we know that congestion actually contributes to air quality. So just want to hear a little more about that.
On the role of congestion and air quality? Well, it goes back to an earlier comment around, it's almost like idling, when the cars are sitting on the roads, they're continuing to run and so releasing pollutants. You know, transportation is a huge part of the air quality concern. Within Hamilton, you know, approximately 40% of the air pollution that we see comes from transportation alone, and then another 30% approximately comes from non-road sources. So that would be rail, shipping, and then sort of household implements like lawnmowers, for example. But it's a significant proportion of the pollution that we see in the city. And again, you know, if we need to look at how we can minimize that impact from a transportation perspective to reduce it.
Fair enough. And the other thing, I'm glad Esther raised the issue about the drive-through, but I think there's not a council that has this issue, but you just have to go to any of your schools in your ward at pickup time, at school end time, when you look at the amount of cars clogging up those internal local roads and in idling for 15, 20 minutes, because the biggest complaint I get from neighbors who actually live there is that they're enduring that. So those kids that are getting educated go into that very car they're getting picked up in, and hopefully, that is another part of the benefit of doing that. So I just want to highlight that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. We're getting lots of lessons today. Much appreciated. So can I have a motion to receive the presentation, please? Moved by Pearson, seconded by Mann, all in favor. Carried. Thank you very much for your presentation, and keep up the good work. You know, progress is being made, notwithstanding the fact that, you know, vehicles are kind of the major source of our kind of poor air quality. We're making progress, and the more investments we make to help reduce that, the better off we'll be in the future. So thank you so very much, and keep up your good vigilante work.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Out of 9-2, Board of Health Orientation, we have Dr. Richardson here is going to make an orientation presentation. Yes, ma'am? Yep.
May I have a motion to receive?
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I not take a motion to receive the presentation, the report? A motion to receive the report, moved by Vanderbeek, seconded by Danko, all in favor. Carried. Dr. Elizabeth, floor is yours.
Good afternoon. Thank you. So Lorraine's going to just help me switch presentations. Thank you. Just got some technology things that's new to me, but not new to Lorraine, so she's got us all on hand. So I'm here to go over a bit more of an orientation. I think when we saw the, particularly the new councils during that time, I said, we'll go a little bit more into the Board of Health piece and your roles of Board of Health, because there's separate legislative mandates that you have, as you do with many other parts of the organization. And so this, the approach we took this year is try to be responsive to things that we've heard through the evaluations that you've done and lessons we've learned as we've gone. So I'm going to go through and do, this is a bit more of the dry talk about responsibilities today, try to lighten it a little bit. We are going to have a showcase, though, as well, with our programs, that is going to happen before our January meeting, and give your staff, as well as yourself, a chance to talk to more of our staff about what it is that they do. And then we'll start into the process of our actual annual plans with some population health assessment information in January as well. So this is just the beginning part, and perhaps a little bit of a more dry part. So a reminder, too, about what public health is. So we get mixed up with a few things, but essentially, public health is about the organized efforts of all of society to keep people healthy and prevent injury, illness, and premature death. So it's carried out by many, many people, many, many organizations, including this organization, not just when it's meeting as the Board of Health, but in all the work that you do. And it is also refers to the specific institutions, so Public Health Services here, the Public Health Agency of Canada, different institutions that there are in Ontario and in Canada more broadly. The history of public health, there is a piece that was brought out many years ago that talked about all the major advancements that had improved the life expectancy in, across the world, really, but particularly in Western countries, and how many of those have been due to public health advancements. So when we think of those, we're thinking about things like safe foods, we're thinking about immunization, we're thinking about disease control efforts, control of things like pests, safer workplaces, many, many different things that have gone on. And many of those have actually been based in the determinants of health, which we know underscore our health. Here in Hamilton, the first Board of Health actually came about in 1873 with Dr. Charles O'Reilly as the medical officer of health at that time, and municipalities have had a long, long history in terms of delivering public health services in Ontario and across Canada. It wasn't until 1945, actually, that provincial grants began to Board of Health, and that was largely because at that point, we had some 800 Boards of Health across Ontario. And so it was an encouragement to consolidate those and reduce those and improve the sort of scope and efficiencies within it. And in 1981, the region that then existed, the regional municipality of Hamilton Wentworth, voted to become the Board of Health for this area. I'm going to show you a little video that hopefully will work, that talks about how those determinants of health act in part, and about what we can do and where we can focus. Because often what we find that we're doing is picking up the, and reacting to the issues that have happened from issues around income, poverty, air quality, all those sorts of things, as opposed to thinking about them proactively. So this is a great short video on it, and I'll just set it up for you.
You're standing on the edge of a river. All of a sudden, a flailing, drowning child comes floating by. Without thinking, you dive in, grab the child, and swim to shore. Before you can recover, another child comes floating by, so you dive in and rescue her as well. Then another child drifts into sight, and another, and another. Eventually, hopefully, some wise person will ask, who keeps chucking these kids in the river? And they'll head upstream to find out. Every time we have to clean up an environmental disaster, every time a young person winds up in jail-- up in jail, every time people have to take medications to make up for the fact that they couldn't afford good food, we're suffering from the results of downstream thinking. Thinking upstream means making smarter decisions about what kind of country we want. What better goal could Canada have than creating the conditions for all people to enjoy true health, and experience physical, mental, and social wellbeing? It's the best way to measure our success, and upstream thinking is the way we get there. Help us make the mainstream look upstream. Visit us at thinkupstream.net to find out more.
So this is, of course, very reminiscent of the kinds of work that we do, and the fact that we're most often talking about promotion and prevention in terms of health issues, rather than talking about the protection aspects downstream. Those continue to be, of course, an important part of our work, but it also makes it difficult in terms of public health to show what we stopped from happening, what we prevented from happening. You were talking earlier about the numbers around deaths due to air quality, you know, we do have some measurements on how things have improved, and we've contributed to them. But I always tell that story about tuberculosis programmes in New York City in the early nineties, and how they had a fairly low rate of TB, and so they pulled their TB programmes, and a few years later, you know, those programmes had been costing about seven million dollars. A few years later, their TB rates went up, and they had to institute new programmes that cost seventy million dollars. And so it's hard sometimes to measure those things and see those impacts, but it's important to remember. In terms of public health in Ontario, there are now thirty-five local public health agencies across the province. There were thirty-six up until May, I think it was, of this year, and there've been some amalgamations, that you may remember, have been part of reports that have come out of SARS and those sorts of things, about how to improve capacity in terms of public health across the province. Public health in Ontario, of course, is also supported by the ministry itself, in terms of the population and public health division, and then the arms-length agency, Public Health Ontario, that helps us in terms of analysis, science, expertise, all those sorts of things. Hamilton, of course, is down there, in that green central west area. And one of the things you might notice as you go along, every single organisation and ministry that we relate to has a different way of classifying us, as to whether we're central west, central east, GTA, whatever it may be. So for us, we're central west for public health purposes. The Health Protection and Promotion Act is the primary legislation that governs public health. I meant to look up, but didn't find it just before we came in, the total number of acts that is part of the responsibilities of the Board. It's much, much more than just these. There's Immunisation of School Pupils Act, there's clauses under the Cemeteries Act, there's all sorts of acts that have references either to the Board of Health, or to the Medical Officer Health, in terms of expectations that are put upon us. But this is the main piece of legislation. I'm going to go through and highlight particularly the Ontario Public Health Standards, which fall under Section Two, Health Programs and Services, and talk a little bit more about Section Six, and Health Units and Board of Health. Back in 2015, you'll recall, Patients First was one of the things that was being discussed under then Minister Hoskins and the former government, but the point that was made was an important one, which is that public health had become disconnected from the rest of the healthcare system, and it wasn't really a part of health system planning on a regular basis across the province. And so there was a Patient, there was the Patients First Act that came in in 2016, as well as the new Ontario Public Health Standards, and one of the four areas of focus was to improve that connection between public health and local health integration networks. And so we now have a formal steering committee, FOR, LINFOR, which brings together all the medical officers of health, who must have a relationship with the CEOs, and we talk about issues in common, particularly around population health assessment and health system planning, and as well particularly about health equity, because it's such an important issue. Public health today has a focus on using a population health approach, so sometimes what I say is that our, while individual physicians and health agencies tend to focus on the individual patient, our focus is on the population and the community of Hamilton here. And the approaches that we bring aren't just, we do do some clinical care, some direct patient interaction, but by far, the majority of our work is actually done in working with groups, and looking at policy, and looking at the broader sorts of issues that can influence the determinants of health and health issues. We start from that population health assessment piece in the green box, and as I said, we're going to be bringing back to you our population health assessment for Hamilton. We've gotten better and better, thanks to some wonderful staff that we have in that area, under Michelle's leadership, and the manager, Ashley Vanderlon. We look at the social determinants of health, and all of the things that affect those conditions in which we live and play, income, education, connected, social connectedness, all of those sorts of things. We have a focus on healthy behaviour, supporting people to make healthy choices, and make those choices as easy as possible to make, and we are active in healthy communities, and creating self, safe and supportive environments that prevent disease and protect health. And of course, we look at those things across the lifespan. In fact, that's one of the things when we're doing our planning, that has been, one of the challenges, is trying to integrate those pieces across the lifespan, and make sure they're coherent and connected as we go through. And you'll see more of that when you see our annual service plan and budget in February. The Ontario Public Health Standards that we're responsible for delivering, they are, have been recently updated through a modernisation approach that the ministry has undertaken, and they set out the minimum expectations for what Boards of Health are expected to deliver. They're very explicit within them. This is what we're expecting for you, but we're expecting you to look at your local needs, to look at what impacts the evidence shows, we're looking at you to look to your partners and to your communities, and decide what else do you need to do in your particular area. And I'll talk in a minute about some of the other things that we do here in Hamilton that exceed those standards. They're all based within the foundational standards and organisational requirements, and I'll talk a little bit more about those in just one moment. One of the other things, though, to remember is that these are requirements that are put in place to make more consistent what happens in health units across Ontario. It had been one of the criticisms coming out of SARS and Walkerton and specific issues, that at times, you could find very different approaches happening across Ontario. And so these things have been put in place to improve the standardisation across the province. So this is a very busy chart, it's kind of fun to put together, though, I will say. So what this does is take our existing organisational chart, which you'll see more of during the budget process, but you see the three main divisions, Epidemiology, Wellness and Communicable Disease Control, the Healthy Environments Division, and the Healthy Families Division, and then which of these standards that we're required to follow, that fall under each area. And so you'll see the four foundational standards are led out of Michelle's area, in the Epidemiology, Wellness and Communicable Disease Control Division. While that's led from there, it absolutely underpins and has requirements for all of the programs and services across the organisation. So those are around population health assessment, and using that data to plan our programs and determine what the priorities are. Health equity, so looking at ways that we can improve everybody's access to health, and help to level that playing field. Emergency management is another area there, and effective public health practice, that our staff, our organisation, needs to be effective in practising according to standards. Then there are nine program standards that you see across here, Chronic Disease Prevention and Wellbeing, Food Safety, Healthy Environments, Healthy Growth and Development, Immunisation, Infectious and Communicable Disease Control, Prevention and Prevention, Safe Water, our School Health Program. Particularly notable for school health is they're working with chronic disease, substance abuse, to bring that information to schools, and as well substance use and injury prevention. So this is the way we're organised. We always debate about, should we organise according to the standards, or what? There's always, of course, no perfect way to do it, but this just sort of maps out where those responsibilities are. In dark blue, the Hamilton blue, you'll see those added programs and services that Hamilton has chosen to provide. And so in addition to those programs that are mandated under the Health Protection and Promotion Act, here in Hamilton, we are the organisation that provides the alcohol, drug, and gambling services, which is in Michelle's area, along with mental health and street outreach. We also have a residential care facilities inspection program that is operated in Kevin's area, along with some pest control work. And in Jen's area, in Healthy Families, we have both oral health programs that are clinics for those in need, as well as outreach for seniors and education around seniors, and the non-mandatory Child and Adolescent Services, which is a mental health program for four kids. So I won't go through these in detail, but you can see then how they're each organised. During the showcase that we have coming up in January, we'll have staff here to tell a little bit more about those programs and services. It is, again, designed for your staff, as well as for yourself, and so they can come, meet the people, talk more with them, understand it more, and they'll have a little bit more information on these ready on that day. There's the dental health bus. I'll get back to talking about the drier stuff, which is the organisational requirements. So coming out of a number of things, Walkerton and SARS, there was, as I've referenced before, there was concerns about whether we were doing things in a similar way, but also whether we were following good business practices in public health across Ontario. And so what were then called the organisational standards were brought into place, which essentially were minimum requirements in terms of how to run an organisation. And those, they've now been streamlined into four particular areas that we're accountable for. The first is the delivery of our programs and services, to make sure that they're done in accordance with the protocols and the standards and guidelines. The fiduciary requirements that, in all things that you do, to make sure that funding is used efficiently for its intended purpose. Good governance and management practices, that executing those is important to ensure that the Board is functioning well, you will know that there have been boards that have been investigated, and actually taken apart and reallocated, because of concerns about the way that the organisation has been run. There've been others that have had their boards replaced, not unlike other things, but that's, of course, by far the minority. And then the last piece is around public health practice, that achieving a high standard and quality of practice in the delivery of our programs, that we're up to date, we're based in research, and we contribute to the ongoing development of research. There are a number of documents now that we're required to have, accountability documents, planning documents, and reporting documents. Those have all been updated, and you've been going through the cycle as a broader Board of Health over the last term, of starting to see some of those things come through. We have accountability agreements that are signed off with the province that I sign on, myself and the mayor sign on your behalf, that outline these things. We have to have a strategic plan specifically for public health, and so we find a way to do that in conjunction with the strategic plan for the city more broadly. We have a very detailed annual service and plan and budget submission, that in February, along, I know it's exactly the time you're going through budgets, and going through lots of other very thick documents, it's not a favourite time, but that comes out. I would encourage you not to read the full detail of it, but to make sure there's an understanding of what is planned there. And then, reporting documents in terms of performance reports that we have to report back, they're just finalising that process, but quarterly, we report back on finance, and semi-annually on program performance. There's also going to be requirement for a public-facing annual report, which we have actually done for many, many years, and there's going to be an attestation by the Board to say that this is all happening in line with the guidelines, and I'm sure the mayor will be required to sign that off on behalf of the Board. So as I said, annual service plan and budget, it's components, like overall community health assessment is an important part to understand, looking at those program plans, what are the priority populations within them, what are the areas that have most need, and are we focusing on them? That's part of holding us accountable as your staff that deliver these programs and services. When you look at those things, when you know your communities, does this reflect, are you seeing it reflected in the plans we've put together, and what it is that we're planning to do? And so I think those are the, some of the most important areas to focus. Overall budget and staff allocation is there as well. We've finally got some actual comparisons across the province for public health. That has not existed in my twenty-three-year-now career of actually having comparisons, health unit by health unit across, we, for a short time, had it on just budget, now we have it program by program, I don't, or standard by standard. I don't think the data is great yet, because we're all still figuring out what, who's putting what where, but to make it truly an apples-to-apples comparison, but it is good to finally have some of those comparisons that our colleagues in municipal governance have had for years. And then, of course, there's a request for both base and one-time funding. And so you'll see those requests around base coming forward as part of the ASP and B. We try to align that, again, with the budget process, but you do do the approvals for this through this process. Some things to notice in terms of what's coming up. We, as I said, have the population health assessment piece, we'll present January fourteenth, some great work that's been done, the full annual service plan, and then we need to have that submitted March first, so Mr Mayor, it will once again be a run-over to your office as soon as things get wrapped up at council, to get it signed off and sent off to the ministry. Just a little bit more about local committee structure. Here in Hamilton, you know, I said that there are thirty-five Boards of Health. Across the province, there are three different models of governance that are in place. The first is a single-tier model, which is like, which is what Hamilton has. Ottawa has something similar, but they actually carry out things in a different way. So in two of the single-tier models, like Hamilton, they, it is council who accesses the Board of Health. In two others, Toronto and Ottawa, council has an arms-length Board of Health that it appoints members to. In seven regional governments, it is, again, council, there are councils that sit as the Board of Health, and then there are twenty-four autonomous Boards of Health across Ontario, where different municipalities who make up that area appoint members, but then there are also provincially-appointed members. Here we, Board of Health is a standing committee, and there's been this thing that came out, I think it was post-Walkerton, about the challenge that you have as councillors, to be both a municipal politician and responsible to your electorate in that way, but also have the requirements under these particular acts to carry out those duties, and how to consider those. And so in part, this committee structure allows you to formally do both. At the Board of Health, you can wear the Board of Health hat, but, and at the council table, you can wear the other, and if you'll remember, your colleagues in the past have encouraged that, that use be made of the ability to do that through that structure. Board of Health, leadership is very critical for staff, as well as your commitment on issues and being advocates out in the community. We can't do our job well if we don't get feedback, and we don't get input into the sorts of things that we do, and so it's absolutely critical for us. And then, of course, my role, as well as all of our staff, is to be responsible for the management of these programs and services, and to report through on any issues that we have. Just a reminder about those dates again. There's also, in February, on the twenty-first, the 2019 Winter Symposium for the Association of Local Public Health Agencies Board of Health Meeting and Orientation. In the past, we have had some champions who've attended, we call them public health champions who have attended on these. There's an issue that has been transferred over from the former term of council around a vice-chair position for Board of Health, which is going to governance committee, I've forgotten the precise date, but soon. And it would be really great to have at least one of the chair or vice-chair to go to these and understand that broader context, but at the very least, it's open to everybody, and anybody who wants to attend is welcome to do that from a learning perspective. Usually, that first symposium is focused on orientation and those sorts of things at that meeting in February. There are also other resources that we have that we'll pass on via email, there'll be updated orientation manuals from the Association of Local Public Health Agencies, those sorts of things, so we'll pass those along to you as they come in and are updated. And that's it.
Great, thank you. Any questions, members of council? If not, I motion to receive the presentation, moved by Forrest, seconded by Paul. All in favour? Carried. And a motion to receive the report itself, moved by Vanderbeek, seconded by Danko, all in favour? Carried, thank you. Next item is the Health and Drug Strategy. It's an information report. Any questions on it? If not, the work continues. So there's, you know, future reports coming to us on the developing drug strategy. Dr Elizabeth is here, can answer any of your questions. Councillor Clark.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So on page two of four, and three of four, there's a couple of lines where it talks about youth mental health and addiction support. It talks about Hamilton, capitalising on the existing strengths of Hamilton's mental health and addiction system. Have we actually assessed the quality, the number of programs that are available for young people who are having mental health issues? Because what I'm hearing from my community is that there's insufficient support and insufficient help when they're facing a crisis, and they're just told to go to the emergency department, which, of course, if they're not getting the care, then problematically, Mr Mayor, raises substance abuse issues.
Dr?
Mr Mayor, the issue of mental health and addictions is absolutely one of the priority areas that you'll see within our area, within our programming, and the pieces coming forward to us in February, and coming out of the population health assessment, but it's recognised as that right across the health system and beyond. And indeed, in the Community Health Working Group that Paul and I sit on, which includes all of the hospitals, paramoury care, long-term care, all of those groups, it's consistently the issue that's brought up. With, there's sort of... There's sort of three different arms to it right now. We've got children's mental health, children and youth, we've got adult mental health, and we've got substance misuse. And so there's a few different tables who are acting on it. The LIN has a mental health group that is looking more at the broader issues for adults, and they have been going through a planning process for it. This drug strategy has been particularly looking at substance abuse and where are we at and what do we need? And then Jen will speak about, just in a minute, about the Ministry of Children and Youth Services who have looked at those issues a little bit more systematically, I would say. But just to say, I think, all in all, we have, there's a lot of providers here in the community, there's a fair amount of resources, and we're all trying to figure out how to do this differently, how to do it better as we move forward. I think adult mental health may be a little bit behind children's mental health, frankly, in terms of some of that work, but we've got a long ways to go. And my concern, just one last note before I hand it over to Jen, is that when we look at mental health issues and what's going on, and we look at those determinants behind them, we have some significant uphill work to do, and that's why it's an area of priority. But when we look at those indicators coming out of the children and youth sort of area, this is going to be a significant challenge for us as we move forward.
Thanks, Elizabeth, and through the chair to the counselor. Just to expand on that a little bit, so public health's primary focus, of course, is prevention and health promotion in relation to mental health, and we do provide some services that are related to clinical counseling. And so we are a part of that bigger cohort of service providers in our community that do offer direct clinical services for youth and children experiencing mental health issues. And so the province, MCCSS, has funded in every community, or has allocated in every community a lead agency to something called Moving on Mental Health that's been in place since about 2011. And what they're looking at are core services provided to youth for treatment of mental health issues and ensuring access of those services that is equitable and fair in every community. And so the lead agency in the City of Hamilton is Linwood Charlton Centre, and they are working with all the agencies providing service in children mental health services to come up with a community plan for the City of Hamilton.
Counselor Clark?
Thank you for that, because I guess in my mind, I watch the little cartoon and you talk about upstream, and yet I'm seeing that we don't have all the upstream on mental health, and we're seeing significant opioid deaths and drug abuse issues, and yet we really don't have the resources there for mental health in the community. And I hear it across the board, from nurses, from doctors, everyone I talk to is saying, oh, there's insufficient resources. And I'm just struggling, trying to figure out, how are we supposed to help folks when they're told, just go to the emergency department? But they're at the emergency department, and they're told, well, you have to commit yourself, and then you got the whole stigma thing, and they're back out on the street, and then we have a suicide. And I'm wrestling with it, just like the rest of the community, and I'm not sure we're actually getting any further ahead. I'm seeing nodding heads. So they agree, Mr. Mayor, so I'll reach out to Linwood Charlton Hall and see if there's issues there that I can pinpoint. But I am seriously, going to the emergency room for mental health illness isn't really solving the problem. If there were urgent care facilities or someplace after hour, a clinic that, mental health, you could go to if you're in crisis, it would really eliminate some of the stigma of going into the emergency room.
Through the chair to the counselor. So you're identifying some wonderful issues that are really part of the community table right now in terms of prioritizing issues in our community and seeking to find solutions. And so Linwood is really leading the charge and has identified some key areas of investments related to the gaps in our community. As Dr. Richardson has already said, it is an issue that is discussed at many, many tables. From the prevention side, I will remind you that we have a school program. Our school public health nurses are working very closely with both school boards, and they have identified a shared and common goal of mental health in schools being a focus of some of the work that we're doing from a prevention standpoint. So lots of work happening in this area, and you're right, it is an issue, and it continues to need to be a priority, and we also need to be accountable in terms of what we're doing and the impact it's having.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'll take the rest of the conversation offline. Okay, thank you. Counselor Wilson.
Thank you very much. I was just wondering if you could maybe comment or direct me on any resources that examine the role of how we build cities and our city form to that of, I'm thinking in general of social connectedness and social capital, and whether there is a leading authority on the relationship between how we're maybe designing isolation into our city and our mental health outcomes. Is there any resource you could, do you know of any?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the counselor. It's an important point, because our built form very much influences our health, whether that is in terms of the physical activity that we get or the social connectedness that you're talking about. I've just sort of quickly scanned my colleagues, and neither of them knows of a particular resource in terms of that issue, but we'd be happy to talk with you more about that piece and how it connects.
Thank you, because I think I understand that more economists are writing about the importance of social capital, vibrant social capital, to economic outcomes than now sociologists are. And therefore, if it's important to producing positive economic outcomes, therefore, it has a role in producing less than optimal outcomes, whether it be health and aggravating conditions of poverty and so on. So I am particularly interested in it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So the information reports before you, can have a motion to receive the report, moved by Whitehead, seconded by Collins, all in favor, carried. There's the Interview Subcommittee for the Board of Health. There are three counselor volunteers requested who would like to be on the Interview Subcommittee for new applicants for the Food Advisory Committee. We'll all jump at the opportunity. So, Dan, it's one. I saw Esther Paul's hand kind of sort of go up. Paul's might be two. Marula? One more. Marula, all right. All right, we have Dan, Pauls, and Marula. Thank you. Thank you very much. You know, I'm sure it's likely one meeting, and then you'll have your appointments made, and you'll be done, so much appreciated. We have the review of the outstanding business list as of September 17th. Dr. Elizabeth, you had a couple of issues you wanted to point out.
Mr. Mayor, just going down the list, there is one issue that we are asking to remove, which is the groundwater extraction for commercial water. That's really a ministry, the environment, Ministry of Environment, I almost forgot to see you guys, help me out, conservation parks, thank you, issue rather than here. And so we would suggest that that one, you know, we've been waiting for some time on, we would just let that go, and if it's an issue when it arises, that somebody bring that one back. Others are mainly either due dates that are consistent with the original timeline, or are things that have actually already been completed and could be removed.
Okay, so are they indicated as such?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes. You'll see the due dates. I think you have the same document before you with the red dates, February 2019, March 2019, and then the ones that are suggesting to be removed because they're complete.
Right, okay. So you have it before you, it's asking for the item W to be removed, and a number of other items. So if you see them all, and you won't have any issues with any of them? If not, a motion to approve the outstanding business list as amended. Ms. Ferguson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Dr. Chen. Dr. Chen, we've been talking for a long time about Epon Ephren Auto Injectors, and in the summer, we're going to roll out the pilot to 25 restaurants. I don't see that happening yet, and I don't see it on the outstanding business list. Can you give me an update on it?
Sure. So the issue, so we've done a certain amount of informal recruitment, the, and there are a number of restaurants that are interested, they're just right now not interested participating in the project as it is formally, but they are doing it on their own informally. But I can follow up with you in terms of how we move that forward.
I'd like to see it on the radar screen, so I'd like to see it on the outstanding business list, because we were supposed to be rolling it out to 50 restaurants through a public announcement in the summer, and that didn't happen yet. And I know you're in negotiations with McMaster and OutofX Canada, and has it bogged down in that area? Are we ready to go? What, and then the second part is, can clerks please put this on the outstanding business list so it stays in front of us?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So the main, so there's generally like three areas where restaurants sort of fall. And one is they're not interested due to perceived risks. The second is they're interested, but the, you know, they're weighing the pros and cons of getting the training for free versus being in a more structured administrative project. So from what I'm hearing, from people who are actually approaching restaurants and they're having interests, is that the main limitation right now is the signing of the legal agreement. And so they're pursuing this, to do this informally on their own.
Okay, but we were going to do a public announcement, 1,500 restaurants in the city, and we were going to experiment with 50 as a rollout through a public announcement, see if we could get 50 that would come in and participate. Are we not going to do that anymore?
So we can still look into that. So the issue, I just wanted to see if we had everything in place to, before we roll it out with like a public announcement, because if there's certain other barriers that, limitations we hadn't thought of that we needed to address. So right now, it seems that there might be other things that might make restaurants proceed in a different direction, that we probably want to fix that first before doing a public announcement. I was going to chat with you offline, but happy to discuss now.
I sense a vague answer there, maybe for good reason, so I would appreciate if you would contact me offline, because we talked in the late spring about getting this rolled out by the summer, and it didn't happen, then we got into an election cycle, and it just seems to be stuck in the mud. So I would appreciate if you could contact my office and see if we can move this forward. I would ask a clerk to also put it in the outstanding business list so it stays in front of us. So this is the rollout of Epon Ephren Auto Injectors to 50 restaurants in Hamilton.
So why not an update report for the next meeting?
Update report for the next meeting.
Okay. So that on the outstanding business list, and an update report for the next meeting? Okay, okay.
Can you bring a report back to this committee after we have our conversation?
Sorry. Here you go.
If you could bring it back, an information report, so the whole members of Board of Health can know what the standard is, it just seems to have stalled. And so at the next meeting, you can bring forward an information report, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Whitehead?
Public Health Department, as you know, is on the outstanding list, the work of the physician recruitment, and they have found a home, at least temporarily, in an ideal location that is conducive to attracting more physicians for the City of Hamilton. So good news there. They do need some assistance, and I believe in the context of IT, phone setup, and so forth. So I'm wondering if there's a way that that could be facilitated through the Board of Health or the department?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We've, we're aware of the request, and we've reached out just to make sure what we can do within the systems that we have within the building, and we're trying to resolve that right now.
Perfect, perfect, but you've done an incredible job. The other thing, I think, Mr. Mayor, in regards to the outstanding list, is that we have new counselors, and I think it'd probably be prudent for our recruiter to actually make a presentation in front of the council in regards to the state of the physicians and the physician recruitment in the City of Hamilton, where the significant deficiencies are, what the challenges are, and what is, what the action plan is. So I'm wondering if we could, I don't know if that's a clerk issue, or if that's a, who could drive that, but it'd be nice if we can have that presentation.
Sure, we could include that in the future agenda, Doctor?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, absolutely. The relationship is actually of the Subcommittee directly through clerks, but happy to reach out to Jane and talk with her about that.
That'd be great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we have an amended outstanding business list with changes, and in addition, including the Epon Ephren Petzels, all in favor. And that was moved by Jackson and seconded by Ferguson. And I have no further issues or any comments or any motions, so a motion to adjourn, moved by Wilson, seconded by Dan, and everybody else. Thank you very much. All in favor? Carry, thank you. Have a good afternoon.